Our church and the scouts used to do a hero.
Mr. Dyer, are we on?
You can build your own thing.
Okay. It is six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everybody, I'll let scout pack Miami come through first.
All right, please rise. Advance. Scouts salute. Follow me as we do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two, color guard post. Have in tow we have a proclamation.
Yes, kind of going out of order, but it's, it'll be okay. We'll get this here this evening. Oh, yes.
Okay, there he is.
There we go. Be seen here, yes. Whereas the Cub and Boy Scouts of America has been at the forefront of instilling timeless values in youth since its founding in nineteen ten. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America continues to teach youth the importance of completing good deeds, learning outdoor skills and knowledge, and developing strong moral foundations. And whereas Plain City has come to several local community organizations that make scouting available for members of our youth in the area as a means of character building and citizenship training. And whereas the Village of Plain City applauds the Boy Scouts of America for their focus on leadership development and community building, and further commend the organization on their laudable motto of be prepared. The Villages like to recognize the members of the local scouting organizations for their interest in and dedication to America's youth and public service. Now therefore, it resolved that I, Jody Carney, Mayor of Plain City, do hereby proclaim that twenty-fourth day of February two thousand twenty-five is a celebration of National Boy Scout Day within the Village of Plain City. Yes. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. You guys did a great job. As they are exiting, Mr. Dyer, would you just call the roll? Here.
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 If we did call to order here, so are there any amendments or additions to, if there are not any further amendments for addition to the council meeting agenda for February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, the agenda will be presented? Is there any motion to approve the council meeting minutes from February tenth, two thousand twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
I'm staying.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
I'm staying.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Council meeting minutes from February are approved. And February month of February, so also this is our meeting before our kick-off. And next week is Ohio four H week, so I'd like the, our representatives from our Union County four H club to come stand with me. We get the privilege of being between Union and Madison. So this evening I'm presenting it to Union County four H members, and then later this week I will present the comp- compilation to Madison County four H members. Whereas young people of Ohio and Union County are one of our greatest resources. And whereas the four H program has assisted in the growth and development of Ohio and Union County for decades. And whereas adult volunteers and advisors are devoting their talents, leadership, and resources to serving these leaders of tomorrow. And whereas the four H programs in Union County help youth acquire knowledge and develop life skills such as leadership, self-esteem, citizenship. And whereas Ohio four H encourages young people and adults to become involved in educational programs offered by the four H program in Union County through the Ohio State University stations and the OSU College of Food, Agricultural, and Environmental Sciences. Now therefore, it resolved that I, Jody Carney, Mayor of Plain City, do hereby proclaim that the twenty-fourth day of February two thousand twenty-five is a celebration of four H week within the Village of Plain City. Thank you so much. I'm gonna put you on the spot real quick. You're an advisor. How many members do you have in your club?
We're at nineteen.
Nineteen, okay. And what, and you're a club or a member?
Is in full fledged.
Oh, you're a full, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I understand that. What is, what projects are you taking this year? Great. And what project have you selected?
That's a good one, maybe.
Ooh, okay. So it's kind of along the sewing line and textile, so. Do you see four H has so many different areas of interest, and so thank you for being in Plain City and having a fun year in Plain City. Thank you. Okay. We only have one visitor signed up for this evening, and that's our Union County Sheriff, Mr. Rachel. And we will waive the three minutes if anybody has no objection to giving our sheriff longer than three minutes if needed.
So I was here last year during election time, and I promised everybody that I went to different meetings that if I won, it would not be another four years before you see me. So I wanted to stop down to let you guys all see a face again and remind you. But on the same hand, I was asked last time I was here, what's going to change far as the police department and the sheriff's office relationship? And I told you not much would change. We continue to dispatching. That's very true. But there has been a couple of developments, and I wanted to come and share. We have partnered with Dale and Plain City back in two thousand sixteen to put a shed down on our finer, pioneering range. And then the agreement was that they would be able to qualify and use our range for free without being charged anything. About eight years ago, and there was never official agreement going on, so it was just
I tried.
by word of mouth during that period of time. So I officially put something in writing, but also I'm waiving all the fees because it's only fifty dollars a day for in-counting law enforcement agencies to use it. I'm waiving that fee for any of the in-counting local law enforcement, because I figure taxpayers built that, forfeits your money from drug seizures, help build it. There's absolutely no reason to take money out of anybody else's pocket for that purpose. So he has official written notification of that. The other thing is Phil Greenbaum and Aaron Howard are associated with our office. So when they get tired of Dale, they can come up and visit us for a little bit and get a break. But Phil Greenbaum's on the Drug Task Force, so he's got an official ID. He's been sworn into the office, so he has countywide jurisdiction when it comes to that. And Aaron's on our SRT team. And we did a restructure within our office when I took over. Part of the restructure was reorganizing our commander for SRT team and a team lead. And I've always felt you put the best people in the positions to lead, no matter what team it is. So we have agreed with, Dale has agreed with us in our choice, and Aaron has accepted. So Aaron will be our lead for our SRT team. There will be Captain Bob Roberts from Sheriff's Office. He will oversee the complete operations. But when it comes down to Nick Grady and the entry and making the plans for everything we do, Aaron Howard is going to be the one in charge of the team. So very proud that he accepted that, and
Allowed it to happen.
It's the first time that I can remember, all years I've been at Sheriff's Office, we had somebody outside of our agency to be a team lead. So this leads to a lot of volumes towards there. Special Response Team. So anytime there's basically it's why it's a friendly air word without the special weapons and tactics, because we're not a full-time team. We've been more of the entries for warrants, drug warrants, and arrest warrants, and standoffs.
That's always been just through the Sheriff's Office, not local agencies and
So marriageful used to partner with us, but if we still had our own team leads. We partnered with Logan County, and they went back to Belle Fowl when there was a chief's position that got dialed up there. So they partnered with us, and we still train with them. But Aaron, it's the first time ever that an outside agency gets to lead our team. So thank you for your guys' support for our office at the same point in time. We had three open deputy positions. They've already had three recommended to fill those positions. We didn't have to advertise this time around. We had one that wants to return to the office, taking about a twenty thousand dollar pay cut to come back to our agency. And we have one that's been twelve years at the Village of Johnstown. He took Officer of the Year. He's applied. He looked very well. And then one that was recommended I used to work at marriageful, or about nine years, he's applied too. We've got one on waiting list. This is the first time I've had that many years. We've had anybody on the waiting list, which is, we're very proud of that too. So do you guys have any questions? I know I went past, but any questions you guys want answered, or specifically, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes. Yes, congratulations. And anybody have any questions?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Love the preparation.
All right, I will see you again in the future. So thank you guys.
You're welcome anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving into our reports. Last week I attended the Jonathan Alder Junior High Think Big Space Grand Opening. It is their third Think Big Space within the school district. And I believe there are only ninety in Ohio, and our school district has three of them.
I think it's ninety nationwide.
Nationwide, okay.
And we have three of them here in our district. I think that's what I read on the, on the news release.
In Ohio, I, yes, something of that.
It was pretty impressive what we have.
Yes, and so was able to connect with our state Senator Michelle Reynolds. She was there as well. So great opportunities attending that, the grand opening. And then also the Business Roundtable last week. I just want to commend staff members for putting together a really well thought-out program for our business community to update them and keep them updated, and keeping the door open for conversation that they can always come to us if they have any questions, and keep providing that level of customer service back to, to our business, business owners. And with that, I'll also cover the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had a very short meeting. You'll see the two items on our agenda this evening that we had already had public hearings at the previous meeting. And it's really just zoning code updates and everything that need cleaned up. We went ahead and approved both of them in planning commission. So with that, I will move over to Ms. Lupton, our Village Minister.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what you just said about the Business Roundtable. I thought it was really positive. Great attendance, and thanks to Mr. Stanford for organizing the logistics behind that. I had a great meeting up town at the depot today. We're moving into the interior, picking out some of the finer details. The plaza work should begin as soon as the weather breaks, the water and sewer. Want to thank the crews. It's a little warmer this week, but last week it definitely wasn't. They were put in a couple nights of long hours for salt and snow removal, but that, that went really well. And then I will be at the Ohio City Management Association Conference Wednesday through Friday. It is local. It's in, it's in Columbus. But I will, that's where I'll be for the rest of the week, but call me if you need me.
Thank you, Ms. Lupton. I also want to go back and say that I attended the coldest night of the year, and Ms. Ferguson was there too. Anybody else attend that I did not see? It was very cold, so we kind of huddled together until we got walking, and that DNA raised forty thousand dollars from that event. So I didn't think of it through my mayor cap, but I was there with my four H club, so that's why I just kind of did not put it in the report. But it was a, a great event, and I think a lot of people in the community are excited for doing it next year. I had lots of phone calls of why are these people walking up and down Chillicothe, but it was a, a great event. You saw people of all ages and coming together to bring awareness and for a good cause. So thank you, Ms. Ferguson, for being there as well. Ms. Sonnet, our Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. You've been working with the Chicago quite a bit, Ms. Lupton. He introduced me to somebody else who's covering our investments, and we currently have our investments through Park National Bank. He took a look at our investments and thought they were very, very conservative, and so we changed everything over to his firm, and I, I believe it sort of gave him more interest, so hopefully he'll start seeing that in revenue, and so we can get more money out of earned money, so just love to hear about that. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Sonnet. Chief McKee?
Yes, Officer Flowers spent most of the day in elementary school. He taught every grade there today. Yeah, through different topics, of course, from kindergarten to the fifth grade. So he was, he was the old day, he was ready to leave there. And then lastly, just an update on the hiring of the two officers. We actually have two officers going through the background investigation part. They are scheduled for polygraphs next Monday here at the police department. They do well on that, which I think they well, will, and they'll be given a conditional offer as long as they pass the psychological test coming up to be cadet. So hopefully, I, I don't have, I don't foresee any issues. So we're gonna mandate that, once they get a conditional offer, if they accept, then they will start the academy, I think April the thirtieth. And won't be on the academy for six months after that.
Thank you, Chief. Council President, Mr. Terry. Mr. Lafayette? Economic Development Committee, Ms. Ferguson?
Nothing to update there. Our next meeting will be March eighteenth at eleven.
Thank you very much. BZA?
We are going to have a meeting in March, I believe, if everybody can make it. We have two variance requests, one conditional use is the plan, and I think we're still looking for one additional member for the committee, so.
Thank you very much. Cover of planning and zoning, Parks and Recreation?
So we had our meeting. Not so much discussion soon. We did start to bring up and talk through Sugar Run early, early, early plans, so that's where the discussion started in there. Our meeting this month will be moved from the eleventh, because it is the first grade music program, and the chairperson and the council representative have a first grader, so we're
Noted. Anything on tree commission?
I still don't think I'm I have still not attended a tree commission meeting nor been invited to it.
Okay.
I don't think that recently.
It's in the winter, there's still
There's trees and
Thank you very much. Personnel and Finance, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. We have a meeting scheduled for, I think we said on March thirteenth.
Fire Board, Mr. Sins?
Yeah, I mentioned last, last time I was at a meeting that we, Union negotiations happening right now. Also, this past meeting that I was at, we passed two resolutions for the retirement of Captain Jason Schreider and Chief Mark Kidd. So they were passed unanimously, even if we made And then our next meeting is on the twentieth. Nope, that's ridiculous. I was reading the wrong
On the sixth, okay.
The first Thursday.
Plain City Area Development Corporation, U Daily?
We didn't have any meetings in February, but we, our next one is March twelfth, eight thirty.
But his is eight thirty.
We meet in the morning.
Yeah, A M, sorry.
We'll morning people.
Yes. And He's CBA, Union County Chamber of Commerce. You have a meeting on Wednesday.
Union County Commerce, that's the meeting.
Okay. And to update, you could, if you don't mind adding on Madison County Chamber, I can then give an update on this one. But Wednesday evening up at the Thilo, they're having a business after-hours meet and greet, so from four to six, like stop up and and also annual meeting invite I saw from Cindy, so if anybody can send in, I cannot that evening, but if anybody can send in, that would be wonderful.
Past week I attended the Union County CIC. I mentioned to the board that was there that I would like to see the bylaws reviewed here in the next month or two about putting Plain City as a permanent member on that board. And they all agree that we need to make it, what has to happen is the bylaws have to be changed for that to happen, because right now we're on a rotating with other villages or municipalities, and they see the need for us to be on that board every time, every year. So I like that. It won't come up, we won't, we don't have to get off that until next year it would be, it would be, but we're gonna start doing the bylaws looked at here during the spring, and hopefully get that finished up by summer, that we'd be officially a member. And he also said the dues would be different than if you had to do something for land transfer or whatever, if you went through them. I didn't know what he meant by that, but maybe the administration, you guys know something to say about that, but they were very, I'd asked, he'd mentioned it before, and I thought I'd bring it back up to him, that I think we may be a permanent member of that, that board, especially with all the don, we have one more.
Thank you, Mr. U Daily. Going into discussion items, annual impact fee report.
Thank you, Mayor. The annual impact fee report is required for ordinances. It's in the packet tonight. And we'll go through it. You can see that our balances are starting to accrue pretty high. We've been trying to avoid nickel and diming down these funds. That way, if there are large purchases such as a land acquisition or pieces of equipment, we could use these funds for those purposes. So that's it for the year.
Is that why there's zero expenditure in twenty twenty-four for these?
Yeah, I think after one more year, next year, we're gonna start feeling comfortable, or if something comes up, something that's needed, that money will be available.
Any questions? And then McCoy Heating and Air Conditioning lease.
This lease is in its final year. It's due to expire in March twenty twenty-six. It was a five-year lease. This is the two thirty-one Friend Street, the former police department, I think. Building, it's tucked all the way back there. The current occupant is, they requested, they asked if we were interested in selling the property. From a grandfather zoning and strategic long-term plan, I would not recommend that. However, I would recommend that we sign another five-year lease with them. They've been a great occupant. They're looking for some stability. They want to stay in the, the building, so we have some time to think, or we can make the motion to extend tonight. It's up to council. I think they're just looking to see a very long-term plan.
Lease with McCoy Heating and Air Conditioning?
I just want to ask a couple questions. So from a rent perspective, are we good with that, with the amount? Is there?
Yes, I, I think it's competitive, but it also covers taxes, utilities, and everything.
And it'll stay the same for the five years?
Yes.
What was, what's the zoning, what's the issues with zoning right now with, like?
It's really weird, but technically on the Otters Map, the right of way doesn't go all the way down to it. There's another private property that cuts the road away. So if anyone
Oh, I thought you said you had one with the answer.
Oh, that's Technically, I'm drive
So if anyone were to purchase it and use it for something new, it would be, there's a lot to bring into compliance.
Any other questions? Mr. Terry, were you
There's already a motion.
Yes, okay, so
I'm sorry, motioning, is that being Mr. U Daily?
Yes.
Chris Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Motion to extend the lease with McCoy Heating and Air Conditioning is approved. And then the discussion item of PCADA.
Yeah. I, I can talk about it. So our bleachers at the baseball field are no longer compliant for insurance purposes. So the PCABA basically approached us and asked, so we need to, eventually we need to replace all four, but the insurance carrier, they were just replacing the worst of them this year. They're thirty thousand dollars per set of bleachers. Today's dollars, so next year it'd be more just fair warning. They're willing to split the cost with us and do it this year. I think they're doing it on Kaiser. Is that right, if they're gonna start with? Yeah, they're, we'll start with the worst, whatever's the worst. You guys have been there. Pretty bad. So it'd be fifteen thousand dollars to do the bleachers, or we have to do it for thirty thousand, so seems pretty straightforward to me. I think Linda was saying that it's, we have money in the budget for this without having to do a supplemental.
We have budgeted money to improve pastime park essentially, so we could clean up the line items in a supplemental, but the money has been allocated to these parts, so we're comfortable with the park.
So it's been allocated, how much, like, how many bleachers could we do this year? We, they were, this is only a proposal to do one set of the bleachers, which was all the insurance.
The one of the fields.
Yeah. I don't know the worst one, whatever the worst one is. You crack your brain, wherever the worst is to sit, that's the one they're talking about. I think there's four Kaiser. Maybe there's five, maybe going down that, down the So my only question on this topic is, like, from an ownership standpoint, who owns them? I did tell them that with, because of plans always being in fluctuation, that we want them to be movable no matter what, if we have them purchase them, and you know, the only caveat I would just wonder, you know, was from an ownership standpoint, who actually owns everything, because it's kind of like the fields, we own the fields, but I figured the bleachers are kind of in the agreement, but that would be the caveat.
I mean, if, one, if we sit there and spend
We have to spend thirty.
If we, fifteen thousand, you know.
Or you take it as a donation.
We still own them, but if it's a donation from PCABA, we still own those. How, how
That might benefit them.
Our insurance covers everything in the park, yes, but I have, PCABA went through a field for one dollar. They improved the concession stand at their own cost a lot. I think it's just more like if they were ever to move out, they could take the bleachers that they bought, type of thing.
Move out, but this is from up before, and I just want to make sure that we are bleacher. Just the right field.
Yeah, I think it would be, by three and three years.
Yeah, and, and to Mr. Daly's point, I, I mean, I'm okay with this idea. I'm also okay with if we did like thirty, or if we, if they wanted to do more, but I don't know if we want to do them all right now, but if they had any plans to go higher, I, I don't think these come to us, really.
Is the insurance okay with us doing one field at a time?
Yeah.
That would, might be the bigger question.
For now, next year we might do I mean, I like the idea of helping, but it's just is it better for us to just do it, because they're bleachers?
Right.
Well, they also, every year, if they still do it, before the season starts, they ask all the parents to come and paint the bleachers. They sand them, they do all the stuff to get them ready. We used to do that. I don't know if they still do it.
Oh, I think they
I know when our kids were, were little, we used to paint those bleachers every year, every spring with green paint, you know, all that stuff, so I don't know if they still do that or not. That was part of the maintenance we did at the PCABA when our kids were playing. So just to clarify, you'd be okay with us just doing it?
I mean, it's our bleachers, our fields.
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with either one, too. So do we want to, Ms. Lupton, the guidance of we just want to retain ownership, if they want to donate half of it, great, if not, so be it.
I think that would be great. They, they donated fencing and such three, four in the past, too.
If we, if we're, if we're okay with So either, either we'll do it or So either, either we'll do it or.
It, it kind of, you want to use it 90% of the time anyway, you know, so.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess from administrative purpose, whatever you need to make it happen.
Are there other bleachers that like next year are going to be out of compliance?
I think it's, we're just going to phase, so no one has to put in all the money at once.
Yeah, the answer to your question.
Okay. Next, a series of motions. First one is to set the public hearing for the amendment of the codified ordinances, Chapter 1194, mobile vendors of Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code, ZC-24-8 for April 14th, 2025.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes. Yeah.
Public hearing is set for ZC-24-8. Motion to set the public hearing for the amendment of the codified ordinances, Chapter 1139, Planning and Zoning Commission of Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code, ZC-25-1 for April 14th, 2025.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Public hearing for ZC-25-1 is set. Motion to set the public hearing for the rezoning of 7970 Rickard Road, 0 Rickard Road, 0 US-42, 8650 US-32, parcel number 15-0019009, number 15-0019011, number 15-0019011. Dot, dot, one. Number 15-0017013.2 and number 15-0017014.001 from Jerome County Rural Residential District RU to Plan Unit Development, PUD, and for the rezoning of 0 US-42, parcel number 15-0019017 from Jerome County Regional Retail District, R R2, Plan Unit Development, PUD, for April 14th, 2025, RC-242.
So.
Wait.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
RC-24-2 for public here. Tabled business. We have second reading ordinance 3-25 extending the moratorium on the cultivation, processing, and retail sale of adult cannabis within the Village of Plain City and declaring an emergency.
And we tabled this again because timelines only worked if we did it this way, right?
We only four here, we couldn't get.
Yeah, there were timelines and people.
Motion to declare 3-4, 3-25.
Yeah, procedurally, you just say, motion to approve second reading ordinance 03-25.
Untable, we have to untable.
Oh, we have to untable.
Yes, that's why.
Six different things.
Motion to untable. They'll actually be just, she, procedurally, there needs to be a motion, a second line to untable it, but then there just needs to be the motion to approve it with the permission number.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have Aaron moved, is there a second?
Untabling. Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. Terry.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes. It's off the table. Okay, I'm good, yeah, now you can.
Motion to approve ordinance 03-25 and declaration of. Second.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ordinance 5-25 is approved. Second reading resolution 10-25 authorizing the sale of village property.
Cool.
Wait.
Wait, wait, yes.
So we did 3, we just, we're 325.
Right.
I mean, just, let's just ask.
Sorry, so yes, you council just approved the ordinance 03-25, which is moratorium. Now the second reading ordinance 05-25 is the ordinance actually amended codified ordinances to implement the permanent payment. So that will need to be, if not associated with.
Excuse me, I apologize, I apologize, I apologize. Okay, second reading ordinance 5-25 amending the codified ordinance, Chapter 724, cultivation, processing, boards dispensing of medical marijuana of Part 7 of the Business Regulation Code to prohibit cultivation, processing, and retail sale of recreational marijuana within the Village of Plain City.
Motion to approve ordinance 05-2025. Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Re- ordinance 5-25 is approved. Thank you. Second reading resolution 10-25 authorizing the sale of village property.
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Resolution 10-25 is approved. Second reading resolution 11-25 establishing communications manager position.
Motion to, resolution 12-25. Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
12-25 approved. Second reading resolution 12-25 amending the accounting clerk position description, amending the position title from accounting clerk to financial analyst and updating the responsibilities and duties.
Prove resolution 12-25. Second.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
12-25 approved. Second reading resolution 13-25 amending the development manager position description, amending the position title from development manager to development director.
Motion to approve resolution 13-25. Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
13-25 is approved. Second reading resolution 14-25 establishing the facilities commission position.
Prove resolution 14-25. Second.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. U Daily.
Yes.
14-25 is approved. Moving to new business. First reading ordinance 14-25 provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of 1.2, 1,255,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding bonds previously issued by the village for the purpose of paying the cost of constructing an outdoor municipal swimming pool, including related facilities, a pertinent insight there to declare emergency. So there a.
We don't need to wait a second.
We don't need to wait.
It'll just be an emergency next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, okay. And we have two executive sessions on for this evening. First one pursuant pursuant to Ohio Rights Code, Section 121.22G8 to consider confidential information related to an applicant for economic development assistance.